Okay, one of them's on and the other. All right, I think, yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It is 7:05 on the fourteenth of December, 2022. We'll call the meeting in order. And the first thing we're going to do is have a roll call with one short interruption in the middle of that. Joe Armon, Council Position One.
I'm here.
David Budries, Position Two.
I am present.
Stephen Hardy, Position Three.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to take a brief second here in the middle of our roll call to call Peter Davenport for the last time, and he's not going to be here. And the reason he's not going to be here is because I have his resignation in my hand. I was given this letter today by Peter Davenport to the City Council, Position Number Four, City of Harrington, and to Mayor Jess Silhan. And he said, "Your Honor, it is my greatest regret that with this letter I announce my resignation from my position as Harrington City Council Member, Position Number Four. Effective as of 7:00 PM Pacific Standard Time, Wednesday, December the fourteenth of 2022, my decision is final and irrevocable." There's several more paragraphs here that you're more than welcome to read. I won't say it's a sad day. It is sad to not see Peter here. I've known him since I came to town. Anytime somebody told me that a guy owns a missile silo, that was the first thing that drew my attention to this gentleman, what kind of a guy buys a missile silo? But he's a very interesting man. I've enjoyed knowing him and still enjoy knowing him. It's somewhat of a sad day. It's a health reason that takes him away from his position. So that's the last time we will be calling Peter's name at the City Council meetings. Levi Shank is not here, although I expect him to call in at any time. Jerry, is my phone setting there? That's good. You can leave it if, for the moment. So Peter is not here tonight. Recognize the visitors. Those who would like to have their name put on the record, please state your name.
Sherry McFlowen.
Denise Holling.
Okay, thank you. Additions to the agenda. Gentlemen, any additions to the agenda tonight?
I'd just like to touch on previously what we talked about. The nuisance, the court, district court, okay?
I've heard a couple things about that this week. I don't know if anybody's prepared to make a statement.
And also, I have one more drinking water issues in town.
Okay. So I think I need my laptop since I have nothing printed out here. The next thing on the agenda is approve the minutes for November 2020. Excuse me, Stephen, it's the other one.
Oh, your iPad?
Yeah, my iPad. I usually print these things out, thank you. So we'll use.
It's a lot easier to look at printed.
Yeah, I like them printed, but. So does everybody have a copy of that?
I do. The minutes you're putting around.
The minutes for November 23rd. Let me just a second here to pull those up.
I did, Harold.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out which one of this. So budgetary. We ran out of paper here yesterday, so.
I did too.
Being an antique, I like to have paper copies.
Didn't come out yesterday.
Okay, yeah, so I found it. The subject line of the email is December fourteenth, 2022. This is for November 23rd regular City Council meeting, right?
Correct.
Correct. This is. No comment.
Were you here? Under visitors, you didn't wish to be here tonight?
Yeah, I think he just scanned it into us.
Is the library report on the work or?
Sorry. Only the check register. Yep. Come on here. City Council Agenda. It's the one right below. Okay.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, sir.
For discussion.
Any further discussion? Yeah, it moved to seconded.
I would approve if under visitors, Denise Hollings, Hollings, Holling. She's gonna kill me.
It's become a constant thing, I think.
I call her one name on the tape here, but yeah, she's not under visitors. There's one thing missing. Other than that.
Oh, oh, that's library report. Okay.
Yeah, you could put down libraries, put her.
Okay.
Inadvertently.
Any further discussion? So we got a motion on the floor and seconded, seconded to accept the minutes with the change as noted to add Denise to the visitors. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve the same? So we got three. There. Next thing on the agenda here is to approve the claims for November 30th. So let's go back here and go through the claims. The next one up.
So this would be from transaction nine seven seven to nine six eight.
Yeah, not quite there yet, sorry.
Okay, we were also sent the end of the month check register.
That's the next page. Okay.
There's more.
Nine seven seven to nine five eight is payable.
Right, but nine seven seven to nine six eight is check register?
Well, there's also, well, I have.
Well, those are December. There was, there was end of November, which was.
Yeah, we have nine thirty-five through nine forty-five. Is that what you have?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
I have that as well, I guess. So we have twelve one to twelve twelve, and then eleven twenty-nine to eleven twenty-nine, so end of November.
Excuse me.
Yeah, my rocking chair was gone. There's no sense looking at that. That's a waste of time.
We have two.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Check registers. Two, two check registers.
Yeah.
So can we start with the first one that starts nine three five?
Yeah, sure.
Nine three five.
November's the last of AAA, right? Was that what we decided? Okay.
I would certainly hope so.
And anything going on to December? I saw some other stuff. That's just a overflow from November. Nothing new generated in December and forward? Supposed to be.
No, that's a true statement, I believe.
Move to approve the check register page, transactions nine thirty-five to nine forty-five.
Second. Okay, we got a move, we have moved, got a motion on the floor to approve the check register as written and seconded by David, moved by Stephen.
Just one of those pages at this point.
Any further discussion? Okay. It's been moved and seconded to accept the check register, the first page, which is the.
Claims for nine thirty-five.
Nine thirty-five to nine forty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approve? We have three. Okay. So the next thing is our payroll.
No, it's the second.
We got the second page.
Yeah, the second page of claims.
Move to approve claims nine eight two, nine eight three, and nine six three through nine six eight. That first page has payroll and claims intermixed.
Nobody's questioned that yet, but that's.
Claims, claims.
Well, yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Okay. Kind of, yes. Six three through nine six eight. And we'll catch the others when we do payroll.
Okay, listen. So we got a motion on the floor. Any further discussion on those?
I think. We have a motion, it's already seconded.
Yes.
I was questioning transaction nine seventy?
Nine seventy is actually payroll, so I'm not sure why it's intermixed, but if you look at the type, it says payroll.
You are correct for check register.
Yeah.
Okay, scratch that.
It's a good question, and I would ask it, though I think I, I think I know the answer to it, but we do need to probably cover that when we get to payroll.
DW excavating, what, what, what did you, is that was the straw and all that?
That's the covering. Actually, the straw's in another one. We didn't see that coming up. But DW was the covering of that and the blankets.
Okay.
And the straw. And the straw is going to come up in a later check here, you'll see, too.
I just thought we paid for that last.
We paid it out of our COVID funds.
Right, okay.
And we just received the money from the state in the last two or three days here to cover that and give us our money back.
As long as that, that's just it. That's not an addition to what they were doing. Nope, that's fine.
Any further discussion? Okay, we got a motion on the floor to accept the check register as shown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve?
Nobody.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about earlier.
Yes.
Year eleven.
Yes, yeah.
Move to approve payroll as presented.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Our next item here is payroll. Stephen moved for payroll to approve it. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
And then we can cover in discussion.
So we've got a motion on the floor now. Discussion on the payroll.
Nine seventy is that, my understanding would be that that payment was there to address questions regarding his role as CEO.
No, actually, there was mileage and overtime that was not.
Oh, is that?
Put on his check, so there was an additional check to cover those items.
Right.
Do we have an amount on that, or is it?
Yes, well, it should be there. I think it was one ninety-one.
What, what is that check number, thirty-one ninety-seven?
Well, there's, the only question I had is there's two check numbers here.
There's two check numbers here.
Yeah.
So did one get voided?
No. No. Why is there two check numbers, Jerry, for the additional check?
Probably because I missed some hours.
Well, thirty-one ninety-seven doesn't have an amount attached to it.
There's this blank.
Yeah, it's blank. So there's this one, thirty-one ninety-seven and thirty-one ninety-eight.
So we don't know if thirty-one ninety-seven is scrapped, voided? That was probably voided, that's why, yeah.
Okay.
That's why it doesn't have an amount there.
Does, does bias allow for the memo line to be changed after the fact? Or is that locked at the time when it's issued?
It's probably locked, but I'll check.
If it is possible to change the memo line, which it may not.
Good evening, Levi.
But if it is, it'd be.
Yes, I can. Would you like to be, you would like to stay on the phone? Okay, let me put you on speaker. Are you there now?
I'm here.
Okay, we got you. Did I miss anything there?
Uh, no, I think the assertion was that the check was voided.
Okay.
So.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve payroll as written. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four zero, sorry.
Four zero, that's okay. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is a treasures report. I don't believe our treasure is here, so we'll forego that at the moment.
I, um, like, I want to, I think she sent to council everybody.
Yeah.
And that information. I gave her what I had, those two.
So did I.
So she's covered there, right?
She's got more than she needs.
Okay. I just don't want that to be the reason she held up on her part.
Next thing on our agenda, Mr. Steve Marsh. You have the floor.
You were supposed to shoot those T-shirts out of the gun, guys.
Well, let me tell you, my creative assistant has begged me to do a T-shirt cut. I mean, she has, like, seven times she's told me, we need to buy a T-shirt gun, so we can just launch it at everybody. From this point blank.
You're gonna make a sermon, you know?
Sorry. No, no, it's okay. It's all right. I've heard about it. It might be another day. Um, we'll start with the easier one. Um, this is a change order that requires counsel for the bullets for four thousand six hundred dollars-ish. It is for the real line, it's sort of a construction project out there. It's about one percent of the total construction budget. Um, it's the real line, the water line coming out of the bathroom, tarping the excavation soils. The reason we're tarping them is I'm hoping that we can keep the moisture out of it so we can actually use it as backfill and compact it as opposed to bringing in, importing in expensive gravel. So that's the reason why I wanted to tarp it. And also clean that small burner for around that yellow house. So that's, and moving the water meter out of Sackett property out into the.
It's yellow house. Still one in the corner. Okay, well, there.
You left that yellow one there? Yeah.
So how much I pay attention around here? And this is, this a change order alignment issue?
Yeah, it's, it's revising the water, water line alignment, moving the meter off the Sackett property into the right of way, tarping the soils out there, so hopefully we can reuse them, and making the small burn around the property. Just so if we get melt, oil, water, sudden gush of water, we don't end up flooding that house.
And that, that, those funds would be applicable to the state fund as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
You overlook any of those you want. There's the charges in here if you turn that over for the items.
Move to approve. What was the total on that? I'll second it.
Like, four thousand seven hundred bucks?
Forty, four thousand six hundred fifteen dollars and thirty cents.
Okay.
Thirteen cents.
Thirteen, okay.
So you notice that I signed my name and said recommend approval. Obviously, I can only recommend the F and P to you, and then if you guys approve, we send off the GR Massey for their signature, and we're off and running.
And this has nothing to do with bringing in other drill, drilling devices or anything else?
This is not holding up the project as it is, right?
That is not, no. I will talk about the next thing that is.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor. It's from Stephen Hardy.
I second it.
To accept this. David seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving this charge? Aye to aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve the same? Motion carries four zero. So the whole council needs to sign this, Steve? Only I do, huh?
Really, uh, Steve, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay.
And today is twelve fourteen twenty-two. They are Massey, so that's all you need?
That's all I need. I'll send it off to them.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about the thing that is holding up. We ended up getting weathered basalt rock higher than what we were told.
You sure?
Yeah. Their current drill setup is not designed to go through rock. It's only designed to go through soil. So the, the driller is working on a solution to get a drill bit that can get here that can go through rock. We don't know how long it's taking to get here. Rough, I have a very rough idea on cost, which is very, very rough. And how much longer it will drilling, jack and boring through basalt, as you can imagine, it takes longer than jack and boring through soil. So we're gonna kind of wrap our hands around that. I was hoping to have that by this meeting. I, they're still working on trying to get their costs, so I don't have anything to report, but that is going to delay the, delay the project.
And you, how far, how far in did you hit it?
We thought we were totally be about seven feet deep. We hit it at about five. So.
Down. They haven't drilled anything.
Okay, I, I got you.
Yeah.
We're only in the process of excavating the pit.
Yeah. Glad we haven't started, because what happens with those drills at the end, hitting that, depending on the type of drill and everything, we may would have had to abandon the casing. So it's really good we see it now. If you're looking at the glass half full.
And blasting's not an option.
No. Um, you have to core it. You have to go underneath the tracks. I mean, that's what we're trying to put in, is a twenty-four inch casing, about a hundred and seventy feet long underneath the track. And you can't blast without changing the tracks up above.
So I understand this is underneath, this is not the staging area.
Can you grab that right there?
Okay, so talk about the same thing.
It's this right here.
This is a draw section view, looking through the dirt, not a, not a down, not a five thousand foot picture.
So we thought we hit about seven feet deep. We actually hit it right about here. And so we can't.
Yeah, you can't blast it, no.
No, so we have to get, so we can't excavate down, so we just have to jack and bore a steel casing twenty-four inch through there, then we'll thread the water pipe through that.
And then looking for a twenty-four inch bit.
Yeah, I rocked it.
Assuming the machinery that is here is not capable, doesn't have a horsepower to do it.
My understanding, it is big enough. However, until that is confirmed in writing, I am not willing to stake more than ten dollars on that.
Are they?
Go ahead.
So a chance that they might have to reduce the diameter?
It's gonna be that, okay.
Yeah, it will be that.
They just need a new cutter hand for the.
Yes.
For the auger.
Mm-hmm, that's all they need.
So when you say you have a rough idea of the cost, I don't even need to really know the number. The only thing I'm concerned with is, is that amount that would put us any way to the top end of the funds that we receive. Okay, well, then it doesn't matter.
The thing we don't know is how many sections of that rock we're going to encounter in the hundred and fifty feet that they gotta drill. Right now, this is outside the, the start of the hole before the tube ever starts.
So our guess, and I want to capitalize the word guess, is we guess that we'll get out of it quickly because on the other side where the other receiving pit, where the other side of the track, you know, that basalt is twenty feet deep. So I am assuming it's, as we, because where we're launching, we start going uphill with the casing. We're guessing, we're guessing that as we go up, the basalt doesn't follow it steep. Does that make sense, guys?
Yeah. It's going the other way.
Yeah, so I'm hoping it does this, and this just happens to be the first, say thirty feet we're out.
Yeah, our whole area is a, is a volcanic flow of basalt and X amount of dirt. Obviously, that south of town, the dirt's pretty deep. Where the arms are.
Yeah, yeah, it'll surprise you if it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I went down eight inches in my heart on a solid rock.
And there's no chance of moving it laterally?
We looked around, it didn't make any sense.
It doesn't, okay.
It doesn't make any sense. And the problem we have moving laterally specifically to the north is the Sackets want to keep that along their property line down there, keep that lot buildable. So as we move it to the north, it shrinks their buildable area on that lot. When you combine that with, is it really going to improve dramatically moving it to the north? It's not worth, it's not worth that painting.
So you have any idea how long this stopping for lasts? Even a, even a clue?
We are hoping, hoping to get started by Monday.
Of next week?
Yep.
Oh.
I'm hoping. How, again.
That's very optimistic.
I know, I know. That is the glass half full.
Yeah.
However, I would not be surprised if we don't get started until the third.
January.
January, because the way this works is per the specifications, next week, we've suspended the contract, so next week's an actual, in theory, a work week, but per the specifications, Washington's specifications, between Christmas and New Year's is actually non-working days.
Yeah.
So it gets suspended there anyway. So depending on when they get started, we'll have to talk about, if they start Monday, they might. might be able to get through it all and actually have the casing in. But if they can't start till Wednesday, Thursday, we maybe just wanna say, let's just wait back in the first year. Exactly. Because on the other end of that is a twenty-foot deep pit, the one you see out there is roughly ten, so it's gonna be. And we don't wanna start digging that out of the receiving pit just to leave it open for a week. So until we kind of know some more.
Until up with more snow and everything else.
So the pit isn't even completely dug yet?
Yes, it is. It is, the pit's dug, it's just a matter of if we can't start the actual.
And the five point five degree is already established in that pit in the bottom?
My understanding it, it is, Jess, however, I have not seen any documentation that has confirmed that to me.
I haven't been over and looked, so.
I know, I, I couldn't even, when I was there, the, 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 I don't even think it was in there yet.
I was going to see, yeah.
Are we still, are we still meeting on Tuesdays, construction meeting?
We had one last Tuesday, however, I wouldn't be surprised if we cancel next Tuesday, just because we don't have anything to talk about. Does that make sense?
Yeah, with regard to your meeting, I did log in because it was Microsoft meetings.
Oh, no. I.
That's okay, just thought I'd mention it. I figured it was the first one, no big deal.
I'm sorry about that. You're right.
Yeah. Nobody was there?
No, we were.
I was there, I was there. But that's okay. I got a lot of stuff done because I blocked on a window of time and I didn't get logged for three minutes, so that was good.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. And then we didn't have our meeting with Cynthia this morning because she couldn't get logged in, so much like you, I was sitting there trying to hammer around emails thinking, hey, every minute's a, yeah, an extra minute, so.
Okay, cool.
The last thing that probably needs to be discussed is, with change orders, technically it requires an entire council approval to make them go. However, you, when you only meet twice a week, we may end up with instances out there on the job site where we can't wait a week or even two days for you guys to make a decision. So I don't even know if this necessarily needs to be a motion or not. I, what I've seen in the past with other municipalities is the council gives the mayor, the authority to sign change orders, or, and/or, council, as long as another council person is involved and they both essentially turn their keys at the same time and say, yes, let's do it. It saves time, and that way we don't have to, um, have some sort of video conference or something like that to get a change order. Does that make sense, everybody?
Yeah.
And that's kind of a fore discussion for you guys, however you want to do it.
Depending on the cost of a change order.
Yeah.
We could very possibly have a special meeting here during the week, possibly.
Yeah, we could, we could pass something on a temporary basis that has a threshold on it, and just.
Honestly.
Cart launch until you get to this point in the ass.
If you get in a situation like that, so you're, you're in the project and there's a change order, you need something done, obviously, right? What's the alternative? No, we're not gonna change it. I mean, we're not gonna leave it.
Well, it's usually not that. It's, you, it's, sometimes it's, um, let me see this, but, we know we have to do it, but it's the cost, and we need to discuss it. Knock on wood, we have money to do over this. We are very lucky so far. So funding usually is not the issue, or in this case, funding won't be the issue.
It's just somebody saying go ahead, and I'm comfortable with the mayor.
Meanwhile, you have five guys standing around with their hands in their pockets waiting to go.
But I guess where I'm coming from is like that. I think the mayor should have the authority to say, E and A is, you know, the cap or what do we have the money for? But then again, ask the question, if it's gonna cost more than that, what are we gonna do? Hey, stop the project, we give up and go home?
I think it's just an opportunity for accountability.
Yeah, so if he does it, then.
I mean, we might have to make, we might have to say yes either way, but it's good for us to know what's going on and to.
Yeah, this is the reality, and I, I, the reality is, Steve, that we have to go with it, so.
I personally don't see it as a real big problem.
I don't.
I know where every one of these guys live. If nothing else, I would go talk to each one of them individually and explain to them what I know, and I think we could probably get something taken care of.
Which is great. I just want to make sure this has kind of been discussed, so. Somebody doesn't go, what do you mean, he's signed three change orders? Totally.
I'm under the premise that we give the mayor the authority within the budget or in the law.
I, I would propose a ten percent cap, ten percent of the construction cost.
That's a good number.
And since we're probably most likely gonna have time, we can just write something up and vote on it in two weeks.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll put something together and get it banged out.
That's fine. And I don't even need to see a copy of it necessarily, I just need to know how it's being done, so.
I don't see it as a big problem.
Don't either, but it's just.
I think we, I think we can work that out pretty simple.
Okay. And that's it.
Okay, well, well, thank you for the T-shirt, thank you for the presentation and update.
Large, what colors?
Gray, black, and gray, black, and red.
I'll do gray. No, I'm not a colorful person. My, my wife is very disappointed in my natural wardrobe choices.
Not a fashion scene, huh?
My, my wardrobe certainly isn't.
So be careful on the way home, it was pretty foggy a while ago.
Yeah, like going thirty miles an hour.
I was on the daylight, just between here and the next town was pretty stiff. So drive slow, drive careful.
Thank you, Steve. Take your time, Steve.
Thank you, guys.
You betcha.
See you have a Merry Christmas.
Do the same.
You as well.
Jess, before we move on to the next agenda item, I was, there's one thing I was gonna call out real quick in regards to, uh, claims and payroll, whole claims specifically, I just wanted to thank Jerry for the proposed billing codes and sending out the credit card statement. Those were two requests from the council last meeting, and I just wanted to acknowledge your fulfillment of those requests, so thank you for that.
Second, huh?
So the next item on the list here is basically a repeat of what we did on November fourteenth, and that was to approve the thirty-two hundred dollar operating budget for the library. The reason that we need to do that is that there was not an action item on that. So although we voted and it passed and everything else, it was actually in error. So we just need to have a motion on the floor to accept the thirty-two hundred dollar operating budget to extend through December of twenty twenty-two for the library.
So moving.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, okay. Any seconds?
We're also happy the library grand opening, we're just throwing cash at them.
Any further discussion? None here. All in, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? We're all in a voting booth. Levi, this thing's.
Break the two.
It's a four, it's a four zero, right, Levi?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you, Levi.
It's cold night sleeping in the doghouse.
He's not even in the doghouse, so he doesn't.
Four zero. Thank you, gentlemen. The next thing on here is an executive session, and I'm thinking forty-five minutes. Does anybody have a problem with that number, or do you think it needs to be raised right now?
No, let's start there.
Okay.
I'm on my way down now, Jess.
Okay, well, we'll give you a couple minutes here, and maybe we'll tack one of these other, we're gonna tack one of the other items that was asked for on an additional agenda item.
All right.
So we'll see you in a couple minutes, Levi. So I've got here, uh, David, you asked, and I wrote down.
I'm gonna tackle the district court real quick.
Yes, that's fine, yes.
When I talked with Renee Honey, the clerk of the district court today, and also Adam, Mr. Adam Walser is the prosecutor.
Yeah.
And he said somebody from council or from Harrington called, plus you joke, and talked with him, but what I got out of them, uh, well, several things. We're gonna have to produce our, for our review, our inter-local agreement with the sheriff's office, for one. But two, according to Adam, the prosecutor, he would like a letter, just so that things are kosher, up to hoil, an agreement coordinated by Bingaman and the district court through him to give the court authority to act on the city's behalf. Now, we're already in the sector, the AOC and all that, and that's good to go, because Renee Honey called me back later, she was gonna check on that, and several hours later, she says, she has all that copy, so Andy Mankey, Chief Mankey did a great job for us on that legwork, kudos if he's listening. So we're gonna have to, in the future, we're gonna have to sit down with, um, the, our lawyer? No, um, it's the new sheriff and the undersheriff and the criminal, we're gonna have to make a deal, go see where our inter-local agreement, what it says right now. And I asked, is this gonna cost us money? Are we gonna have to pay for this service? And Renee said, no, shouldn't have to, and same thing with Adam. They did mention that we should probably talk to Reardon and get on the same contract as them. That didn't really make sense to me. I don't understand that, go on that avenue. But it doesn't look like it's any problem with us going forward with this. However, it's a real hassle for these people, for the court. I kind of maybe spoke out of turn, but I says, our whole purpose of this penalty phase was to make, uh, push along compliance. We weren't looking to enrich ourselves with the funds. And she said, well, that's good, because if that, you know, if it just stays there because of the chain of command, you go there, you, it would cause more paperwork and bookkeeping than you'd want, it would create a minefield that we don't even want to go down, just to get a few shekels. So if we're willing to, the court handle it, keep it, and whatever, that's fine. It is, in my opinion, we should probably go that route, and, um, because again, we're not looking to generate revenue here. And by the time you go that route, uh, they get their cut, and we'll get a cut, and then we have to take out of that cut and give it to the state of Washington. So really, for all that hassle, paperwork, and record keeping, you get a few penny, you know, you get nothing, it's not worth our time. Our main goal was compliance.
That's right.
And, um, so from what I understand, uh, it would have been probably a little bit too much to ask of the clerk or the mayor, anybody to pull that agreement out for tonight. But moving forward, we should probably look at that. I'm sure that contract is what, in twenty-four, was it, or twenty, I don't remember that part.
I thought it was redone every year.
No, we had a.
With the sheriff. Is that who you're talking about?
Yeah, with the county.
I think it's in twenty-four, but don't quote me on that.
But also the district court, we, we need to look at it, because he gave me a little bit of history lesson, and see up until about, I know ninety-seven, it's a ninety-seven contract, um, and then there's one in two thousand and one with the cities and towns of Lincoln County. And at that time, I know ninety-seven for sure, Stephen, you might remember, when did Mark Frank bail out of here? I know he was here in ninety-seven, but was he here in two thousand, two thousand and one?
Yeah, it would have been real close to two thousand.
Okay, I knew somewhere around there, because they, at that time, most of people, most towns had their own, um, marshal or consul or whatever, you know, police force or whatever. And, uh, so same for that, it's, it's a new, um, there's so many nuances to this, it's all, these are the updated, countywide, according to the courts. I mean, they're pulling their hair out over there over all this stuff. Harrington's not, it's not, uh, our problem alone, it's other cities and towns, so. But we are good to go, but we need to have this, uh, he suggested this, we give the, write up a, so everybody's on the same page, a coordinated agreement letter between our city attorney and the district court to, um, give them, to act on our, the city's behalf, you know, and push it their way, thank you, ma'am, you're done, wash your hands, so. That's what I found out. Anything else, I, I don't have anything else to add at this time until we maybe look at that agreement, but, uh, it would behoove us to sit down with the county officials over there, have them invite them, or even the commissioners, whatever, tell them what we expect, um, what our goals are. And I was told, um, well, I talked with Chief Mankey yesterday, and he shared with me that for a long time, uh, David Bigman, our attorney, was, Reardon's attorney, would, would get involved with this, going to find out, he didn't, it was not necessary for an attorney, a city attorney, to get involved with civil infractions, what we're going for. If, if, you get into other.
Criminal?
Yes, definitely that, but if you get into a different level, which I won't speak of right now, uh, it, it would involve that, but that would be by our choosing. If you wanted to go over, slice a bigger chunk off the, you know.
So did everything we had get codified?
Yes.
Yesterday at the mayor's meeting, uh, Wilbur's had several problems with people squatting in houses and had the sheriff there, uh, Creston had a problem, and the mayor of Wilbur said the number one thing is you've gotta have this stuff codified, and it's gotta be in the system. And then the, both of the mayors, two or three of them there, were quite unhappy with the sheriff's department, that they thought the sheriff should be writing the tickets. This whole thing with us writing tickets is not really in our purview, that they could do this on a laptop, and I know I've heard grumblings about that at this table before, and I, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but, uh, it sounds like there's a lot of people that think that's the way it should be run.
Well, according to district court over there, right now, if you write infraction, our officer, you can turn it into the court over there, because it is, has the numbers, it's in the sector, it's the AOC, the, don't ask me, it's an acronym, but I don't, I already know what it is.
Agreed.
But it's, it's, you can, it's supposed to go through, but going forward, we, we need to touch bases with this new regime, and it looked, according to the prosecutor, Anne Renee, I believe it was, they, one of them mentioned that with this new bunch, or new, new blood in there, let's say, it looks more promising, um, they're more rambunctious and wanna take the ball and run with it and get stuff going. So it'll be more, more favorable, more favorable for us, I think, at this time.
So they're gonna have a mayor's meeting once a month now, they're gonna start that, and they're going to try to have the sheriff and the undersheriff come to the next one, which is in Reardon. So.
Fabulous.
Come to talk to all the mayors.
So if I can expand on that just very briefly, everything that Councilman Bedrea said, I spoke to Adam on Monday, uh, he had not had a chance to read everything. He did say that one of his goals, here's our lead between the new sheriff and everything, was that he wanted to get these agreements for law enforcement services on equal footing for every, every municipality in the county of Lincoln.
Okay.
So all of us are on the same page, so there's no question, he said there, one was written here, another one was written over there ten years ago, and he said they were all over the place, and that was a sticky note on his desk, was that he had to go through each and every one of these and figure out what they meant. Um, I have just recently gotten the ordinance that we're, or I mean, the agreement that we're currently living under, uh, just a brief read through, it sounds like they are in fact responsible for taking care of municipal ordinance. in fact, responsible for taking care of municipal ordinances, although they do exclude, um, any kind of animal control.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They said they would like it every, very much, if all of the cities got together and said it was going to be $50 for the first event with a dog, or $100, whatever it is, it's the same in all 10 cities within Lincoln County. So, that when they go out, they don't say it's eight in Reardon, and three in Odessa, and...
So, it becomes a county ordinance, basically.
Pretty much, yes, the same thing from town to town, and he said, if you guys can all agree on that, and...
Perfect.
The six of us were there yesterday, thought we could agree on that, that's not a big operation, we could do that.
And to expand about what you guys were saying, Joe, Councilman Joe, um, it was, uh, oh, forgot, the dog catching thing, is, uh, they didn't wanna become chasing jo, chasing dogs.
Not sure.
They love dog catchers. Which I don't blame them.
Absolutely. Okay, folks, we'll wake you up in 45 minutes.
And the officially stated reason would be to review, because legally, we have to cite that?
We are going to review a complaint against an employee.
Okay. And we will return at 8:41, right?
76 right now.
Yes.
8:41.
Okay. So, let it be written, so let it be done.
You've been recording us all this time, have you?
No.
Thank goodness.
The Harrington City Council will be extending our executive session for 10 minutes. We will be reconvening at 8:51 PM. We are going back on mute until that time. Okay, we are live.
Where's the fan racks?
Yeah.
Man.
We lost one soldier.
I want to go to bed now.
Yeah.
She went home.
She was the one that looked for the S on the end of her last name.
Yeah, I don't care about that.
Go to your house.
Next on the agenda, creation of a new city position. And that would be Clerk Position 2. Is that a true statement?
Yes, so my, this is something that I was talking with Jess a bit about. You know, Jerry has mentioned for a while, number of times over the last year, that he had interest in having a second clerk to help out with things. And it looks like in the budget, we seem to have that money, especially since we spent the early part of this year without both Public Works employees. And now in the latter part of the year, we're without Public Works too. And we have a lot of work we can catch up on with cemetery stuff. I think it would be nice to kind of come alongside Stan as he's so generously volunteering a lot of his time for the city to be able to keep our end of it up. I think we, at least in the near term, have more than enough opportunities to use those hours. I think we, at least in the near term, have more than enough opportunities to use those hours as well. So I would propose the creation of a clerk two position that would be commensurate with the clerk one position in terms of pay and skill set.
I'll second it. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to create a clerk two position. And it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
I think I have all my questions answered.
Call the question.
Give me just a second. I'm creating some documents. You guys need to have a little discussion while I get my notes going here.
How about this weather?
How about the what, the weather?
The weather.
Oh.
Where's John when you need him?
Oh, snow.
Calling Deputy Evans.
Who seconded that?
I did.
It didn't, yeah?
I was on a flight with somebody from Texas the other day. We landed in Spokane. She looked up, went over the plane and said, "What is that?" My husband said, "It's snow." She said, "Can we turn around and go back?"
So I was expecting that to have a lot more discussion. We're ready for the vote. You wanted to call the vote.
Yes.
So, okay. So we have a motion on the floor to create a clerk position two. And we're ready to have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Say, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? As this floor is zero.
Okay, I'm going back on the phone. I gotta go back to work.
Okay.
Joe, is that your part?
You're gonna stay on the, you're gonna call me back Levi? You're gonna be on the phone again?
Yeah, as soon as I get back there.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Two hours to go. See you guys later.
So Joe, do you think that's something that you could maybe throw together? I'll tell you this, so I could have, I'll write up the ad for seeking interest for Peter's council position.
Okay.
And you write the ad for clerk two.
Okay.
And we'll get that sent in.
We'll try to get those generated.
Yes, it is.
I'll try to get those generated tomorrow.
Give me one second here. Let me get you on speakerphone.
Alrighty.
I'm trying. There we go. You're going on speaker. Are you on there now Levi?
Yes, I'm hearing you.
We can hear you now.
Alright, I'm going on mute for now.
Very good, thank you.
So to the end of what's going in the advertiser in regards to Peter's position, I guess the only thing I need to know is how long do we want to hold open letters of interest?
What, Peter's position?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? Okay. So let's say Jan- January 1st.
I've got, uh...
Because that's a little bit over two weeks from today, but it makes it a nice clean...
What position was that? Five or four?
Uh, position number four. According to RCW 42-12-070, we have approximately 90 days. And then the governor, the secretary of state, or one of our governmental officials will appoint. Yes.
If we get it in. So January 1st is Sunday. January 2nd is largely going to be celebrated as the replacement for the work week. So January 3rd, or leave it open for that week, do you think?
Oh, I see.
January 5th?
They have time to put it in.
I would just say that it needs to be post-dated by the end of December.
End of December?
Yeah.
Okay. And ask them to mail it in probably.
A letter of intent.
That's what David and Dees when we get...
Mail it in, okay.
The other's cut off time.
Or drop it off. I think I dropped mine on.
Are those, do those stay sealed?
No.
Okay.
I don't think, my mind was just a...
Letter of intent?
Page.
Okay.
Letter of interest.
Probably need to check with Norm on the next election cycle, what cycle it goes into. I think whoever gets appointed would be right, right for election or right away.
Yeah, I'm not.
Yeah.
So we're looking to appoint somebody through 2024. 2023, I think. 2023, excuse me, yes.
Which means whoever gets appointed, if they want to continue, they will have to probably file in May. When the filing?
Yeah, well, so...
You'll still have to file it, right?
They would hit, they would, I think they would hit a special election. Peter's term is naturally up next year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So they would probably have to file for, in May, for the 23 election.
It's open for, it's an open position.
Yeah.
He's just fulfilling Peter's, or he or she is fulfilling that.
Paquito.
Number four until that time. Okay, cool.
Is the clerk position full or part-time?
Full. Okay. Next thing on our agenda is the memorial hall rates. Do you still have that, do you have the sheet that was sent out? You do have the sheet that was sent out.
I got, I got an extra one here.
Wonderful, thank you.
Here's some comparative rates with the other offices.
So I would like to give the floor to the minute to our visitor who is here on behalf of the...
Harrington Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Harrington Area Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, Sherry McClellan. She spoke to me and she would like to speak to the council about this situation. The floor is yours, Sherry. Thank you for being patient and waiting until nine o'clock. I told you about eight thirty, but...
Luckily, I'm in my hour, I can explain. Okay, so in the last two years, the chamber has used the hall about five times. One was for a meeting. And the others were Christmas newsletter mailer assembly, which is what we just did. And also for assembly of Christmas wreaths that went out to all the businesses. The chamber supports our community in a very active manner by either sponsoring or assisting businesses or other organizations with a number of events each year, such as Harrington Vintage Country Fair, Fall Festival, Hometown Christmas. We assemble the senior bags. And we work with the school to get the senior bags assembled and distributed to the seniors right before Thanksgiving. A welcome bag is created and given to each new resident. Halloween giveaways that the local businesses participate in. They put tables out in front of the businesses and kids come and do their trick or treating there. The, let me see. And the chamber has paid for all costs for the creation and updates of the HarringtonBiz.com website for a number of years. As you know, this has been the way the city hall information has been disseminated until now. When using the memorial hall, we use a very limited space with four tables at most. And we have never used the kitchen. Since we use the memorial hall so rarely, we are asking for the rental rate to be reduced significantly.
I have only one question for you. And I think you just said it, but I'd like you to repeat it again. You've only used the kitchen once, you say?
Never used.
Never used the kitchen. So you just use the big room or to...
The wreaths are assembled in the big room because we don't want them around the food eating area.
Right.
In the small room. And the mailers have been in the big room or the small room, whichever happens to work out best.
Thank you.
And if anybody would like this, I have copies.
So what do we charge them for?
For the large rooms, forty-five bucks.
Large meeting room only?
Yeah.
Forty-five. Well, this is Lions Club. What are we, what are we, do you know?
Six hundred a year.
Six hundred. Was that a quick, how to... Because it's a month, right?
No, every... Twice a month.
Twice a month, okay. So twenty-four times.
And then there's nine months here. It's not June, July, August. So it'd be nine months of the year times two, eighteen meetings for six hundred bucks. I think. I mean, it is close. I don't promise that's what it is, but I think that's close. Which works out to thirty-three dollars a meeting.
There's a press sheet.
Is it nine hundred dollars?
Six hundred.
Six hundred a year.
Nine hundred a year.
But they're using the kitchen and everything, the entirety of the large room.
Which it looks...
You're asking for a reduced rate or eliminate rate? How much of a reduction would you be, would you ask for?
As much as we can get. It's, I, I can't answer that because I want to say a hundred percent.
So you want to get it for nothing?
Yes.
That would be your goal?
That's my goal.
And you use it to all these things that you've been...
Just no, just two things. This year we used, in the, this year and last year, we used it twice.
Right, okay. That's what I thought.
For the Christmas wreaths and for newsletter assembly.
Was that just a day event or was it multiple days a week?
No, no, no. The Christmas wreath took two hours.
Okay.
And the newsletter mailer takes two to two and a half.
So hardly anything.
Right.
Yes. And that was, that was a small room, right?
All the big room.
Well, the mailers were in the small room.
We've been put in the big room before. We've done one newsletter assembly in the small rooms.
Yeah, it was just, we just needed workspace. Do everything that you need to do in the small room?
Not the Christmas wreath because we don't want to put the pine needles in that room where seniors eat. It's, it's a cemetery kind of thing.
Yes.
And we do clean up after ourselves.
Thank you. That was my next question.
Absolutely do.
So we don't, you don't generate a cleanup?
No.
No.
By our life, by our...
We sweep and, you know, especially with the Christmas wreath, of course, we, yeah, absolutely. And if we bring out any tables, we put them back and the chairs. Everything's left as clean or cleaner than we came in.
And you don't, we're just talking hours here in and out. It's not a big...
No, it's not, it's not.
So I would have a proposal with this, and this may be too old, but we can discuss it. I, I would propose, I'll put it in form of a motion. We can discuss it, vote it up or down. But I would move that we make it so that 501(c)(3) is that provide proof of insurance are able to use the large or small meeting rooms at no cost, subservient to all other scheduled events.
Frequency at two times, three times a year or just...
As long as they are out of the way of anyone else.
Or conflicts.
With the proviso that they must clean up after themselves. And if there is an instance where they do not clean up properly after themselves and it's documented with pictures, the council will vote with the potential of banning them from that provision for a period of five years. Because if you're gonna, because the thing is if we're, I'm not in favor of us giving access to the facility and paying for it in custodial fees. So the, the point of that five years is to say, if you want the access to the building, we want you to take very, very, very seriously. At the vote of a council, not just Jess wakes up and has a bad day and decides to ban you of his own, but if there's documented evidence that, look, they left this, they left that, they did the whole thing, that the council can vote by majority vote of three people, say, you know what, this is egregious. You're abusing the privilege that we're giving you. And that you knew the risks and you did it anyways. And so I'm not saying they couldn't pay a normal rate for it after that point. They would just have to pay for the privilege. But I think to me, that's pretty fair that if you're gonna get access to it for free, because it goes back to some other things that, you know, I thought, and it was part of other organizations back when. It's like, well, we'd like to do this, but it's like, we don't even have a bank account. We don't have this, that, the other thing. Now, Joe can, I'm sure, speak to this. We have to have event insurance or there has to be someone who has the insurance for the event. That will be the cost that for some organizations, they don't have insurance the other way. They'll either have to extend it from like a homeowner's insurance. They'll have to go out and buy event insurance. So they'll have to be paying something for it just to even get it, even if we give it to them for free. But it promotes the use of the facility for the good of the community, I think.
Well, I would like to expand upon that. That's where I was kind of going. Is that...
Oh.
Need a second.
Oh, um, second. Um...
Sorry.
It was that, that we give it to them, you know, gives us so little usage that it's free. But my only concern...
You don't want it for free now?
Event insurance?
No, no, I'm talking about...
It's a hundred dollars.
With proof of insurance. Doesn't have to be event insurance. I am certain the chamber has some, has a general liability insurance policy as a club and organization. It would be fall under that every day of the week.
With one exception, every 501(c)(3) or whenever, I would just make it specific to chamber so that we don't have, it's not a free-for-all for everything. Because the chamber's job is bringing in business to this town. They are community-based and do promote positive things for the city. But however, I'm not quite, I'm not, we give you that and all of a sudden it's free. Are you gonna be there more frequent now, like once a month or several times a month for stuff? Just use it more...
Put a cap on it.
What would work for you guys, a cap? What could you live with?
Up to five times a year.
I'm cool with that.
Wow.
With the exception...
We don't use it for five times a year.
But, and so it doesn't, okay, you get in a situation where somebody has it scheduled.
If somebody's paying for it, we, we don't...
With that understanding, that's, that's what...
Stephen said.
I mean, we can start with Chamber. I have a heart to see that service additional...
The way it would pay, sorry, is that somebody has it scheduled to rented. And they want to use it when it starts paying customer.
Paying customers come first.
Okay.
Right.
That's what I meant by that. Sorry to interrupt.
Right, yeah. And so a couple of things pertinent to this. I would have a heart to see that there would be more nonprofit organizations be able to use it than just Chamber. However, two other things, I would be fine to start with this being a proviso to the chamber and seeing this extend. As far as any questions of conflict of interest, I am not a member of Lions Club this year anymore. So I do not have that conflict of interest. But if we start with just extending this benefit to the chamber, then it's not, there is not an accusation about that I proposed this just so the Lions Club could not have to pay six hundred dollars a year. But I still do contend that I would, I think, you know, they, there was the, the event that happened twice there of the lady who's trying to assemble blankets and other goods for...
Threat, the threat of hope.
Threat of hope.
Yep.
I think that's another worthy thing, that they need a facility and they don't necessarily have the money to cover that. And so I don't think we have to do that now to make a policy, to forge a policy now, we can start with the Chamber, but I would just like to make it known that I, I, I think this is a pilot of a larger policy that I'd like to see put in place in the future.
I agree with that, that's, I would agree with you.
Okay, so the stipulations would be up to five times a year. Cleanup after ourselves and have proof of insurance.
And not interfere with.
And of course, paying customers come first.
Yeah, I prefer to paying customers, yeah.
That's what I can think of.
Is that?
I'm good with that.
I don't think I ever heard a motion, but that's.
I made the motion, David seconded. I adopt David's amendment to the motion as a friendly amendment.
Need a second or a third on it?
No.
Okay. We have, are we done with discussion?
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. So we got a motion on the floor that we're going to allow the Chamber to use the Memorial Hall up to five times a year for no charge, as long as they clean the place up and leave it as good or better than the way they found it. And there'll be no charge for this.
And we have proof of insurance.
All in, and they have to have proof of their insurance.
Law-abiding insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
If I was saying aye, all opposed, the same? Message or, Levi?
Aye, I said aye.
Aye, that's four zero.
Nope, nope, it's three zero one.
Three zero one?
Because I'm secretary on the Chamber, I have to. I'm staying.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. So is that worth two and a half hours?
Yes.
I think you, I'm gonna give your group a good report.
Thank you very much.
You betcha.
My computer probably won't knock down now.
You didn't even have to bring t-shirts in.
And I didn't have to bring jewelry.
I was gonna say, I was hoping for an earring, now that.
I'll tell you, you look real good in an earring, Joe.
It, it healed a few years.
I'm sorry, I don't.
Healed a few years ago.
It's goodwill on Christmas.
Okay. Thanks for all the waiting, Jerry. Next on the agenda is utility payments with a debit or a credit card. And I don't remember the name of that company. I think we're gonna give the floor to Jerry on that one. Do you have a, a report on that or?
There, there are two companies that I've looked at. Express Pay works directly with Springbrook. So it is possible with them to upload into Springbrook all revenue that comes in and bring a report. Intellipay, there is an outfit in Moses Lake that I can't remember the name of that Sprague is using and I believe Odessa's using. And they just charge the customer, they don't charge us. And I can't remember if Express is that. I think Express is the same way. So.
But that, that second outfit doesn't integrate with Spring, Springbrook?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But Springbrook recommends Express because they've worked with them for a long time. So that gentleman was supposed to give me an update and he hasn't contacted me in a while, so.
They were supposed to have a meeting with us before the last holiday, before Thanksgiving, and they canceled on that.
Yeah.
So sales must be very good for them.
I think so.
The, uh, the Express option, are they, are we taking the fees out of our payment or are they, is it an addition?
Yeah.
They are in addition also?
That goes to whoever uses the card.
Okay. And that's disclosed to them right on the pay screen, okay.
Make a motion that the mayor and clerk will be empowered to pursue and implement any credit card and debit card based billing system that meets the following stipulations, that it is integrated with Springbrook and that the fees for the transaction are, are borne by the citizen using it.
Second. Okay, we got a motion on the floor that Jerry and myself will work and see if we can get one of these companies to provide us with a lot more information and we'll bring it back to the council hopefully by maybe the next meeting.
Well, I would say this. This motion, my intent of it is to give you guys permission to pursue it.
Okay.
I also know we have a lot of things on our plate with budgets in the next couple of weeks and my two senses that we should get our budgets all straightened out, a few other things first. This problem will still be there in January, but whenever you guys feel like you have the opportunity of the time, this would be my intent that you could pursue it when you feel the time is appropriate.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm good, I'm good.
So we got a motion on the floor that will work to get a credit card company in here and set it up for bill paying, all in favor? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 That's four zero, all opposed, say the same? Very good. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, late fees for utility bills. There's been many things discussed in the past, such as putting liens on property. And according to our lawyer, that was not maybe the best way to go about pursuing that, as a lien would only allow you to make it for a certain amount and is, if that keeps increasing, you could not add those things in. We need to get some more legal advice on that, but apparently liens are not the, the cleanest way to do that. Other people have suggested turning them over to collection, uh, collection agency after a certain period of time, whether it's ninety days, four months, five hundred dollars. You could set whatever kind of threshold you want there, whether it's a time period or a dollar figure. But personally, I'd like to see us think about turning it over to a collection agency and taking it out of our hands. We're, we have right now about twenty-six thousand dollars out in tardy water sewer garbage bills.
So in such situations, what are our interactions with the collection agency? Do they pay upfront or collect a percentage fee or?
The one company I worked with in Spokane Valley, ACS, they, whatever they collect, they keep twenty-five percent. And we will keep seventy-five of whatever they're able to collect.
Typically, if you have somebody who's buying that collection, like we get the money upfront, we're gonna be lucky to get ten percent.
Right.
Of the money back?
No, it, no, if they're buying it, they're buying the debt, they're gonna pay us ten percent. We're, we're done, we're out and it's their problem after that.
So a five thousand dollar bill, they, we get five hundred and?
Yeah. Yeah, we get our five hundred, they're gone, and then after that, it's their problem to collect. That's, that's how some of them go. If they're, if they're simply, whatever they collect, they're retaining twenty-five percent, that's a better deal, it's just not as quick.
And then what happens to the debt? We just.
We're satisfied with five hundred.
We do the paperwork and send it off and we just wait for a check to come back.
But wasn't there something with collection agencies, example? If a resident owes a thousand dollars, we turn it in for collection. We're only gonna collect off of that thousand, any, you can't claw any future.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought. Whatever they, whatever number they get, now they may get multiple numbers, but it's kind of like a, a lien, which is what I understood.
So on the lien is?
Yeah. Once, once, you know, once it's presented, that is a settlement set in stone.
You're on a line in the sand and this part was away.
I don't think that doesn't mean that you couldn't come back for the same person to say, now they have another thousand.
Agreed. Either, either a collection or a lien, you know, but.
I guess the second part of the question here is, um, whatever happened to just turning utilities off? How's that working for us? Because that seems to get immediate response. Well, due to them that's there vacant and.
We've seen some recent creative efforts to mitigate that impact.
Yeah. And I, I think our, our bigger challenge, in my opinion, is probably the houses that are vacant, that are, are not moving, they're not, nothing's being done with them. I think people that are actively living there are seeing the dollar, and some of them may need to be talked to. My concern on this whole picture is a property which is accumulating debt, 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 debt from us, and suddenly it's sold and it passes to the new owner and that debt is uncollectible at that point. We could send it to a collection agency, but it's much better followed.
It happens, that gets collected as a part of the transaction.
Not unless you have a lien. There's a property up on Tokyo Road that I know that passed to a new owner with a substantial amount owing on it and the city is just out, gone.
The lien applies to the amount owed, not to the house.
So when this house is sold, that's where the money comes from, right?
Not necessarily.
I know Tyler James had to pay, what was it, nearly ten grand in order to clear that property that he bought.
Well, it comes to cloud a title, doesn't it? Explain, Jerry, if you know something.
Well, that's what I've been reading lately is, um, I think it was M R S C, I was reading their legal opinions on liens, and they said that a lien does not go against the house. So the house can sell and you can still be out the money.
But doesn't it go, in theory, against the property owner who owns that house?
Not necessarily. The best way to get the money out, or any money out, from what I'm understanding, is to just send them to collections. That's the best hope you have of getting money.
Well, I will admit that I have had houses with liens on them be quit claimed and that didn't become an issue. But I know the house that I had had a substantial amount owing to the city and when it went through escrow, that had to be satisfied before they would transfer a title.
Well, yeah, so there may be several types of lien, liens. There may be a property lien, there.
Well, utilities and, you know, I think you hit on something, Jerry. Those liens that are against, not against the house, but when it's a utility for that house, I think, I'm not an attorney, maybe that's a question for, you know, who? A hundred dollar question for.
I, I would say that I'm not opposed to the concept of us looking into election agencies. I'm not going to be making a motion about approving anything at this point. I, I would say I'd look at any proposals. I'm concerned, I know that some collection agencies get very predatory in nature and so I would, my vote would depend on the exact agency and the stipulations of what they're willing to participate in. But I, I generally see that as an option for us that I could be convinced to vote for. I just want to see the exact contract before I put anything forward.
I think it's a good start for a discussion.
But regarding late fees, at this point, we're only have five dollars a month on late fees. Is that high enough?
Do we have, is there a statute regulating how much you can charge a percentage? I know like most bills, if I'll see them, you know, if I find print down there, if you don't meet the due date, it's one point eight percent or it's, there's gotta be a cap to what we can charge a percentage, whatever that is. I would go with a percentage versus a standard five dollars. Because again, a late fee, well, you're talking about late fees, not unpaid, but.
When somebody's got a bill for four months, it probably doesn't matter whether you put a late fee on or not.
That's true.
If they've made up their mind, they're not going to pay.
That's my position. I'm much more interested in turning off service than late fees, because late fees, I think, are only an encouragement in a very small section of as the person falls off regular payment. Past that point, it's all money and I can't pay or I'm not gonna pay anyways, so.
So would you be under the pretense that for the ones that are occupied, get it shut off until payment or payment, a payment plan agreed on? Or, and/or the ones that are property that are owned and vacant right now, that that goes to file a lien on that property?
Or collections.
Do we, do we have an ordinance in the past that, or a resolution or anything like that, that we know that addresses this? I have a hard time believing it.
You really do, right?
That deals with, with late feels, late fees and, and I'll bet, I'll bet there is, but I feel like we should know what is already in there, what is already on the books.
But it's not working for us.
Yeah, well, do we even know what that's like if it was done in nineteen eighty-four?
Probably done in the last thirty years.
Okay, so there's twenty-nine folks here, a lot of them are, uh, well, if you were to turn on recent print, how come? Yeah, this is last month.
I haven't seen it.
This was from eleven twenty-three. I mean, there's a lot of names on there that I don't think you want to turn their water off on. They're longtime residents of this town, which doesn't make it any better.
Well, when we turn, what if, because typically it turned off, do they get a notice that water payment or it will be terminated?
I, we have, we went around and hang doorknocks, a doorknob, what do we call it, you know?
You know?
And it's, and it's like, it's like I told each and every one of you, you know, a lot of these people drive cars, smoke cigarettes and have telephones. So they've made the conscious decision that they're gonna keep their cellphone and smoke their cigarettes and drive their cars, but they're not gonna pay their water sewer garbage bill.
Well, if they're living there, I would be all in favor of turning off service until payment or payment plan, one of the two.
Yeah.
Or all of the above, but I would be, personally, I'd be leaning, I would favor putting liens on more than a collection agency because yeah. Eventually, when it's sold, you'll get.
It might take a little advice from, from our lawyer to.
I think so.
Tell us the best way to handle that, to put an attachment on.
Collection agency, you're just gonna get pennies on the dollar, whereas the lien, from right now, you should get full, pretty, close to a full amount.
This is just like our nuisance order. What we want to do is get people to come in line, even pay us twenty dollars a month towards their back and start keeping up on monthly bills.
Mm-hmm.
And if we can abate the issue, that's what we want to do, is get them into compliance.
That's all our goal is, is not to go around and just shut people's door.
That's right, that's right.
Well, I just found partly our, our RCW here that I think is relevant to this conversation. If the owner or owner disignee fails to provide notice, city ton providing electrical power, power services is not limited to collecting only up to four months of a, oh, of a tenant's delinquent charges from the owner or owners disignee. That doesn't answer our question.
That's a tenant landlord deal.
That's a tenant landlord deal.
So what's the mayor looking for counsel tonight to?
It was just, it was just a thought, we keep banging this around. It was just, it was just a thought, we keep banging this around, month after month.
I would, my two cents would be to contact the attorney for some kinda, for some guidance on this, or his experience dealing with this.
It is one of those things, I mean, these are, they're not nobodies, they all have names. And we're not looking to shame anybody or anything else, we've just got twenty-six thousand dollars out, right there. And some, many of these are from people from out of state.
Well, those are definitely liens on, because they could sell their property in a heartbeat.
The one who owned the lumberyard recently died.
Or a situation like that, and that goes in an estate and probate.
Yeah. We want the first, we want our money out of there first.
I would definitely, my experience has been, if I get a lien on it, I vote from there, along with the other stuff.
I think we, I think we need to do some due diligence and get some good information on that, that I was into yet.
I would agree. Yeah, I think something clear, some clear directions, some clear numbers, some that everybody plays by.
You need the facts.
Yeah. Which is for as the threshold and who's involved and all those things. Thank you.
And last thing on the agenda here was mayor comments. The only thing that I have to bring up, because I'd like to thank everybody, and please thank anybody of your neighbors who's helped with snow removal. Most, all of our streets are drivable. Having been to four of the local towns lately, several of them still don't have passable streets. So I know David was out helping, Jim Wilcox was helping, Mike Hayes, my next door neighbor, was out with a tractor. I've seen dozens of people here with trucks and plows and... Anybody you know who's been helping, tell them thank you. Our town is actually passable almost everywhere. We have piles of snow, so does everybody else. We don't have a dump truck to load it in, to haul it off.
I will tell you, driving through Spokane yesterday was in far worse shape on the back streets than Harrington is.
Oh, yeah, when you get off the main drag in Spokane, you better have an all-wheel drive vehicle.
I think we put a thank you in the advertiser for our citizens for their assistance. I will tend that as well, if no one has any objections.
Okay.
No objection.
Other than that, I have nothing, everything's been brought up tonight.
Drinking water.
Drinking water was the last thing I was just gonna say, potable water? Yes, what was on your?
Well, I know a couple citizens in town that have expressed some concern about smelly water here. And to some, it's been going on since last spring, they've noticed it, up to a year. And I just wonder if it's more than, to me, it's more than just your standard coliform test, bacterial test, I think. I don't know, one person's gonna take a sample and have it sampled. I mean, a rundown, a more thorough rundown on it. But coming from somebody that's lived here all my life, that Harrington has something that Harrington took a lot of pride in, and it was always known to have very good tasting sweet water. And when people come up to me or in conversation or here that there's issues, my radar goes out, because something's going on. And I don't know what we can do as a city. We obviously get it tested, but maybe, I don't know if they're testing for what? I know they're for bacteria. But if anybody has any issues, I, you know, I think they need to let the city know, because I don't know. So go ahead, Steven.
One thing I did, trying to remember the timeframe of this. I paid to have my water tested. Trying to think of when this exactly was here. And it is more out of curiosity, because I knew, okay, this was in October of last year. And it wasn't out of a particular concern, other than after seeing what had happened with Flint and a few other situations. I was curious, because the city's water is tested at wellheads, as far as I'm aware. I've heard some rumors that there is occasionally some other test points, but I was really more concerned about what is actually the water that gets into a person's tap? And by and large, that test came back pretty well. It was, it was a couple hundred dollar test, if I remember right. And they did a battery of all sorts of things, and there was nothing for all, I actually looked up, because I was curious also, as a city councilman, how did the tests that I paid for come back in comparison to the same things that got tested from the cities? They were within tolerances. This test tested for a whole bunch more things in addition to what the city tests for, and everything came back well, except one thing that was notable is that there was a little bit higher level of uranium than they would have, which I, and I looked into it, and I guess all of eastern Washington, their cities actually, especially as you go further north towards the reservation land, that has tremendous amounts of uranium and a bit of radioactivity in their water, which I had known nothing about, but actually it even got into a spokesman article and stuff. But it was within tolerances, the levels that they said it should be within, it was still within, it was just a little bit high. Now, that was, that was a year ago, a year and a couple months ago. We've since been playing with our water system, maybe something's gone wrong, but I can say that where I primarily interact with our water, at my house and at the community church, I haven't smelled anything, so what it tells me is that it's probably not something that's happening from our source. If it is systemic, it's happening in our pipes, and that would probably means that it's limited to certain areas. If you could put on a heat map where these people are, that would be, because if it was happening at the well, then it would should happen at my house and church and everywhere else, because it's contaminated, so to speak, at the source. But if there are some houses that aren't experiencing it, then it's not inherently in the water. It would have to be something about what gets the water from the well to that specific house.
I would agree. There's two, two people I know of business, they're northeast of the city hall here, and there's two just up the hill from me.
So I scratch my head. I'm gonna shed some light on this. So I agree with you, when I moved into town, my water was ice clean, pure, you couldn't smell anything, it was wonderful. In the, probably the past two months is when it changed. And yes, when I turn on my cold water specifically, there is an odor, almost, and I've been trying to identify it, it almost, almost smells like it's natural gas. It's got that rotten egg smell to it, but it's a little, it's a little different, I haven't put my finger on it. What I find interesting is, it's only when I turn it on, so it's almost like the air that's coming out is being pushed out. Secondly, it doesn't smell when it comes out of my, my hot water. So there's something in that process of the water heating that it's, I'm wondering if there isn't something of a, something of a methane or a decay that is in the line, maybe with the line being open, maybe we got some algae in there, or something of the like, I don't know. And I was, in, in sense that I, like you, I've heard from a couple other people, but it has just started since after our old water heater. It's new with the house, it's one of those tankless systems.
And just some of these people here, one of them's brand new, or within a year, old hot water tank, which what you're describing, I get at my house, and it's after a new fixture I've brought home, cold water, and it's, it's a bacteria, but it's not a harmful bacteria. I don't know the name of it, I'll bring it next time. But you turn it on, it'll smell like eggs or sulfurish type smell. You let it run for thirty seconds, it's gone. Okay, you got that, and hot water tanks get that too. But that is not going, going on. I witnessed the one, and anybody that's dealt with sewer pipes, old sewer pipes, or had to change a pipe in the house or wherever, it physically smelled, this is on the hot water side, it smelled like you were dealing with a sewer pipe. And then the other resident, one in particular, the kitchen smells like, sorta like that, kinda fishy and whatever, but the bathroom smells like petroleum oils. So I'm just going, red flags are going up, like, you know, I agree, you know, it can't be everywhere. That's why I say, if people have a problem, like to hear about it, and?
Put some little lemons in the water or something.
I think maybe we should.
Why don't they have diffusers?
Go ahead.
I was going to say that I've been here for six years, and the last three years especially, periodically I smell rotten eggs coming out of my, my drains. When I first turn on the wa, well, I might have been misinterpreting what I was smelling.
It's on your tap.
When I first turn on the cold water, I smell it really strongly, and I let it run for a little bit, and it's gone, and I don't taste it, it doesn't smell like that in the glass or anything like that, but I'm basically agreeing with you, Joe, and?
One thing would be interesting is to figure out if there's any reports of this happening on that side of the tracks. And the reason why I'm making that is that there's only one connector between the two sides of tracks. So if you're trying to track something down as far as location, it would be, you know, that is one big divider to figure things out.
In our pipes, we've been in, we've been repairing a lot of them.
Yeah.
And in and out of them, and instead of, just by looking at it, I think maybe a program that once we do that, things are isolated, and then when it's, you open the hydrant and turn it on and flush it out the hydrant before it gets charged, you know, to clean, there could be a contamination issue there.
Well, I think, you know, I'll see if I can maybe do a little research into this, or call Department of Health, but the first thing would be establishing, is it a nuisance or is it a health issue? To ask them, what are the things that possibly could cause this?
Yeah.
Because if it's a nuisance, at least that's not doing damage to anyone.
It just dawned on me too, it wouldn't be a bad idea for me to put bleach down my drain, because it's entirely possible, then when I turn on the water, it's pushing air out of my drain back into my face.
Well, you're getting the smell, it's coming out of your tap. You'll think it's the drain.
I just wanna blow it out, that's what I'm saying.
But I wish I could remember the name of it, it's, what you're talking about, like I said, I have it, I have it on two spigots that are fairly new, and I lay it to, it's quite common, and it's a, it's a, it's not algae, it's a bacteria, but it's more of a, it's not harmfully clean, but it goes away rather quickly, and it's just unappeasing to, if you did drink, it's not gonna hurt you.
It's also pertinent to know whether this is happening on hot water and cold water, as you guys noted, because one of the things that someone's experiencing on hot water is like when Janice moved out of my rental, it has sat vacant for a month or something like that. And I go in there, I'm checking everything, because we're in the process of selling this, and I turn on the hot water, and it smells a lot like eggs. And so I got very concerned, so I go, no, I'm selling this place, what's going on here? So I did some looking online, and it's pretty common that there can be some bacteria that's very harmless that can start to accumulate in the hot water tank, especially when it's not flushing. And so that's something that it just flushes, and it gets, it gets better with it. And a lot of people don't flush their hot water tank yearly as is recommended either. So that doesn't apply to your guys' situation, because you've got a tankless system, and we're talking about cold water. So, but I'm just saying, as we take in reports from people, it's important to understand, where do you live? And what, is it hot or cold water? And if it's hot water, what kind of a system do you have? Because those are things that are diagnostically relevant to us to try and figure out where this is potentially.
The thing that threw me off is that there's a difference between fish, eggs, and petroleum. That's where, you know, okay, there's something going on here. If it's just the rotten egg smell, the sulfur smell, I would isolate the, isolate it more. But no, I'd be, anybody listening, on the water bill, I'd like to hear from, we have to come to, there's too much going around, and Harrington always had wonderful water. They just, they don't even chlorinate it, I mean, it's one of the few places in the state that's not chlorinated.
Right.
So, I mean, I?
I love the water, it's just I can't, I don't pour it into my glass until I've run the tap over.
A lot of people have went to Culligan or other water services, or drink a lot of bottled water, or install filters on stuff. And that's how they've got by. But you shouldn't have to do that. That's all I had on that one, so.
What about comments?
Thank you all for doing what you do, it's not easy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Levi?
Move to a jury.
Second? Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn.
No, no, you didn't have nothing.
Any further discussion? One minute, Levi.
Before we officially adjourn, in absentia, thank you to Peter Davenport for his many years of service to this town. It's a high calling, a great example.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. We greatly missed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mass motion passes, meeting adjourned. Thank you, Levi. It is now nine fifty-one PM.
Is it acceptable for me to read Peter's water?
Of course.